Before you do the minutes, I have a correction before, for the minutes.
Okay.
It's a cut and paste thing. The heading is fine for the October 12th meeting, but down the body it says September 28th, so that should be October the 12th. And it's been changed, I just.
We're gonna need the approval of the minutes with that change, correct?
With that correction, I'll make a motion for the minutes.
Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same with the claims, if you're ready to make a motion, I entertain a motion to accept the claims.
Make motions, accept claims.
Motion by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First thing on here, I think you probably have already heard that we've got someone that's interested in purchasing China Walk building from us. Talking to Phil, obviously, I need to recommend to you guys that we want to sell it, first of all, and that we need to issue a public hearing on the issue to make sure that everybody doesn't have any objections to that part of it, is that correct?
Yeah, when the city sells, sells real estate that it owns, it, mayor makes a recommendation to the council, and he also designates a body to conduct a public hearing, in this case it makes sense for the, for the mayor to designate the council to conduct a public hearing on the issue of whether or not to sell the property. I think that was your decision.
Right.
To designate the council. And so you could set up a public hearing at your next meeting, November 9?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah, so I just need a motion from the council Tuesday.
You say November the 9th? I think that's where it is.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I just need a motion to accept the recommendation to set up a public hearing for the sale of China Walk.
Motion made.
Motion made by Steve. Jose seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
How long you got advertised?
John, you're up next.
Quick.
Didn't have a chance to doze off yet, did you?
Our office has installed two new services this month, got 15 applications on file. Said they started building over Jasper to new subdivision. We did run service to RVs, we set the meter, meter's turned on, so we're completely done there. Then, crew's been doing their atmospheric corrosion survey, which required every year, we do a third of the system. That's a manual inspection of all the meters that we have, which is roughly 1,200 meters. So they've got a report to fill out when they check it, conditions, if needs repainted, and then they, as I say, document it, and then they give the forms to Kim, and she'll enter it into the computer, so in case you get audited on that, we have everything right there. And they had to do a leak survey, which is also required every year, we do it fourth of the system, and all the business districts. So we're working on that this week, they should hopefully finish up, it depends on the rain if we get tomorrow, or Friday, we're two or three days from finishing up. Then, with the work being done behind the gas light, I took gas crew chief up there, and we checked things over, we're gonna have to replace that two-inch steel gas main that runs down the old alley, behind the gas light. We had to change the service there at the gas light, like, a year ago, because the gas meter is inside the building, which is not a good thing. So we had to dig down to the main to run a new service, and man is only like a foot deep. I know the old asphalt's gonna be tore out, and they can replace it, redo it. Plus, there's two valves, two grease valves we have on the set of meters that goes to apartments, and then another valve on the other end, it's, like I said, an old grease valve. So we're gonna come up with, we're gonna replace, put two new valves on each end, we're gonna run a two-inch plastic main, and then we'll run new plastic services to the meters, which I think's like four services. So we're gonna coordinate that with the street department, because we're gonna put a new storm drain in, and sewer department's gonna put a new sewer main in, so just gonna take some coordination when we can put it in, and how deep we gotta put it in, so we're don't interfere with the other utilities. So that will be done, and we're gonna move it kinda out into the new section that was dug out, and get it away, because I think the storm sewer, the new storm sewer's gonna run in the old alley, and they were gonna run right next to us, but now they can, it's gonna give them a little more room, put their main in. And then, we did hedge some gas this winter, for November, December, January, February, March, April. I got with Ron Reagan, Tom, we hedged some at just a little under $5 in MCF. Last year, we hedged some at 312, so we kinda combined the two, with the prices that are gonna be coming on, actually, they're already in.
Yeah, a little over $6 this, this last tracker, $2 tracker.
If you would, I got the graph that has the cost of the natural gas. I just want to, everybody deal aware, if you will look, does everybody have the sheet that has the cost? Can you look at the month of October? Go back three years, 2018, 2019, 2020, go into the October column, 333, 236, 227, we've got our estimate for October, and it's just gonna be about $6. And, top of the chart, $6, so it's like a 40%, 43% increase over last October. So it's, it's like everything else, it's going sky high, had reports, you know, propane gas going up just as much. It's a, a good thing for all the customers that own propane, natural gas, check the door, check the windows, if you got any infiltration, infiltration of air, I'll kinda fix it, if it's feasible, if there's anywhere you can insulate, wherever you can insulate in your house, it's gonna pay some dividends, you might be lower your thermostat a few degrees, it's gonna be a expensive winter. And a lot of it depends on, is it gonna be a hard winter, a mild winter? The colder the winter, I think, gas prices are gonna get tighter, the price is gonna go way up. So, we're trying to hedge some gas, buy some gas ahead. Ron Reagan's been watching the market quite daily, or hourly, I should say. So it's just, and you can look back on that chart the last three months, and how it's really jumped. I don't really look far to come down much, it's just gonna keep climbing. Like I say, a lot of it depends on how hard a winter we have. But the customers need to be aware of what their bills are gonna have, their bills are gonna be affected by the big increase. So we're doing all we can to keep it down. I'd say we got two draws off Midwest and Texas Eastern, but last year, during that one month, we had to switch back and forth when there's, the gas was cheaper, we'll probably have to do that again this winter, but it's gonna be expensive on both ends. Does anybody have any questions?
My suggestion, we send out a memo to everybody to conserve, in some fashion, you know, see if we can do something like that.
Customs got to conserve.
Yeah.
I bet MPa has a, something maybe that could be inserted in the utility bills, or something that somebody could post up on the Facebook page to give people the.
Heads up there.
Yeah, I know, it's been in the news, where just everything's going crazy.
This is Center Point, estimated 50% increase in their customers' bills, but they've also got a project.
Project going, if you wanna include into the bill. I'd say our gas costs will probably double, but we've still got the operations and maintenance costs that pretty well stayed the same. So, like I say, just, the October bill's gonna be 44% more than what it was last October. Of course, last October, some of the lowest gas bills in 20 years, now, this year's gas bill's gonna be the highest in 15 years, so it's just, so we're all gonna have to face. Any questions?
Fair, good news, John.
I assume we can do something with utility bill though, can't we?
Yeah, when they put the bolt and letter in there, they should be able to.
Just a reminder, I guess, for people to kinda serve a possibility.
Be reminded that that's based off, you know, how that, how that, how that number, I mean, that's just what, we're, we're just passing along, we're not changing anything on our, our maintenance and.
Maintenance and operations and maintenance costs have pretty well stayed the same.
It's just.
The cost of the gas.
Cost of, on the open market is.
And it will be on the tracker.
Yeah.
Our base rate is like $4, we got an estimate, $6.
Wonder what price the gas would have to go to for electric to become a cheaper way to heat a home?
Well, a lot of it depends on how your house is built, and how it's insulated, and.
How warm you wanna keep your house.
How warm you wanna keep it.
Electric, I like that you wanna.
Cause it's, I used to have electric, and it's, it's not that efficient.
No, it never feel, it never feels warm, anyway.
Yeah, it's a cold heat.
It's a, it's a dry heat or something, it's just different.
It's just, be a long, if it's a cold winter, it's gonna be a long hard winter. Any other questions on the gas?
How much do you typically find on your atmospheric corrosion survey? I mean, do you find more than a handful of issues because of your maintenance work that you, you guys are continually doing maintenance? I mean, do you, do you ever, do you really find much on the, on the atmospheric side of it?
Only thing we found is some surface rust from the.
On meters, or?
Meter nuts, some of the pot coming out.
The uprights and all that.
Then we, you just sand them down, probably just spray some paint on it.
I just wondered, I see what, they have to do that, you gotta, you have to do it all, a third of the system every year, I just.
We do our leak survey too.
Yeah.
We survey the service lines, and that goes all the way up to the meter, and they usually check the meter too, then. Sometimes, we find a real slight leak on the leak survey, it was tight in meter nut, over time, it may work a little loose.
Yeah.
It's just a quick fix, it's all part of preventive maintenance.
I think you guys, I think in general, the city does a pretty good job on that stuff.
As long as we keep doing our monthly maintenance, we stay away from any big capital expenditures.
Yep.
And that helps. The electric side, we did put two new services in at Hunter Crossing, we set three temporaries at Chestnut Gardens. As you can see on the north side, they started construction on three more duplexes, so we had to set temps. Then they finished with the three phase at RVs, transformers finished, tires on to the building, so that's all complete. And then, last couple of weeks, they've been working behind the gas light, setting new poles, we're moving the poles all the way back to the area that they dug out, we replaced the ductal iron poles instead of the wood poles, because there's gonna be a lot of stuff on there, and it's a pretty critical area right there, so we decided to go ahead with steel poles, and it's working out good. They got the poles set, the lines on, transformers on, so now we're gonna start switching services over, probably next week. And then we'll pull the old poles, we've been in contact with the communication companies, Spectrum and PSC, they come today, and they looked at it and see how, what it's gonna take for their, to move their stuff over to our poles, and then we can pull the poles, that'll really make that look different, then, and set some lighting up. And then in May, we ordered some transformers, the council approved some transformers back in May, we're supposed to get them in September, October. We called, wanted an update on the delivery, we've been pushed back on our three-phase pads till January, probably February, as you can see, I added that to the packet. For our residential single phase, been pushed back till July next year. So with Hunter's Crossing Four coming on, the Chestnut Gardens coming on, that takes residential transformers. Luckily, we had several in stock at our supply yard, we will be able to supply them with transformers, but after these two projects are done, we're pretty well gonna be out of residential pad mount transformers. So I'd like to get approval, I'm checking with my, some of my salesmen, nobody's got any transformers that they can find right now, plus, nobody's gonna give them up if they have some extra, with the lead times. If they're out there looking for me, so if they find some, I'd like approval, give emergency purchase authorization, if I could buy them, if they come across some. So, I'd like to see how much, I mean, the price, how's it gonna be?
How many?
How much is it gonna be?
How many do you think you need to buy?
Probably three or four of each, if I can find them, it's not gonna be a real big purchase.
What is this? Is this the second half here, or this one, this item 1, 4 and 11, or am I?
What's that?
On these 150 and 500 and 750, or which, none are you talking about? KVA's?
The bottom are the three phases.
Is that what those are, they are?
Basically.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I see it now.
The residential is the 25, 50s, the 75s.
Okay.
We have one go bad somewhere, I'm not gonna have anything to cover, so I'll have to get creative on getting them back in power somehow.
How many, how many, does this service, one house, one neighborhood, one?
Yeah, it serves, 50 may serve eight people.
Eight households?
Eight households, yeah.
Okay, just so, I don't have any problem with that, I just don't know how, what, Phil, do we need to up to and not to exceed, or what?
In mercy, I guess. These, I'm sorry, these are quotes that are, where they'd be available now, if you, if they were available, this is what they'd be charging?
Yeah.
Is that what you got?
That's what we, back in May.
That's what we had, we had.
Approved back in May.
Those were, it was in order.
Now them prices, product went up since.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's got an October date on it.
Well, that's, he just got the.
Yeah.
Let's see where the, it says, it says, May.
The board can declare that due to the lack of availability, that there is an emergency, and there's a necessity to restock these meters, these transformers, and authorize up to a certain dollar amount, the reasons without.
$10,000? It depends on, it's basically the, where it says KVA, it's basically the 25 and 50 KVA we're really looking for.
Okay.
That's a normal residential area. Like the 167s, that's like the wagon works over here, where it feeds the whole building.
Oh yeah.
167, we have a spare of that, but like Hunter's Crossing Four, and Chestnut Gardens, they'll use like 50.
So what do we have to put in, so are you asking 10,000 per, up to spend up to 10,000 per KVA size, or 10,000 total expenditure?
That's total.
I don't have a problem with that, I mean, that changes it.
If you can find it and go up to 15,000, because they're not gonna be able to find them.
I know, that's what I'm. Yeah, is there, is there a number, limit we have to go, go to?
You, you.
There's never a limit.
Do it however you want, yeah.
John, if they.
As long as it's under 150, under 150,000.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's what I mean, but.
But it's 10, 15,000 probably.
I suggest 15.
Deal the high side, five shoot.
If they find some, it's not gonna be, hey, we got 50 of them here.
You're gonna find seven.
We're gonna find, might be five or four, we're not gonna find a whole stash.
So, let's say we buy some in advance, do, are we still held to honoring this order in its entirety when those are available, or can you reduce it if you don't need them?
These are gonna be cheaper than what you're gonna buy today, so you don't, you don't wanna cancel this order.
Like I said, if you buy three, or four, or five, we'll still be able to use these, they'll sit in the yard and the next.
They don't really go bad, do they? They store well, so.
Yeah.
Do you store these in the building? Are they, are they, do they have to be stored in the building?
They're outside.
Are they?
At our supply yard.
I have a motion to do that, to, up to $15,000 for emergency purposes.
I make a motion to give John permission to purchase transformers up to $15, $15,000 purchase.
Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Makes sense to me.
You know, find.
But, you get lucky, you find that many.
And then I think, a couple meetings ago, kind of last, you can check on smart meters. This is a quote, I had from October, should be in your pocket.
Census?
Census. We got some samples coming, they should be here in a couple of weeks, like 12, 12 meters. What they do, they send them meters to us, there's 12 meters, there's, we gave them all the different kind of meters we have, we ordered a couple of each, they program them, send them to us, make sure that's what we want before we order mass quantity. So they don't just send a mass quantity to us.
They have to reprogram.
That ain't what we want, so we gotta send them all back, and.
So you put these actually in service, and try them out?
Yeah, we'll try them out. It's like, just a couple meters of each.
Yeah. Yeah.
But what they gave us a quote for is 3,500, the single phase, which is 96, 25, and 142, then the three phase with the bottom, 350.
Okay.
And if I would order them now, I probably wouldn't get them till February.
That's, that's pretty good, really, right now, it's only four months.
That may change, but what I'd probably want to do is maybe order 500 with the residential.
So, you're gonna do it five, 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 five years, or five phases, or?
I gotta get with billing department, Tom, and.
Changing out the meter's not the hard part here, I'm.
Take work, take more than changing the meter out.
So are these then compatible with what we use in the water?
Yeah, same, same, same kind of census, same.
Same, same antenna, or whatever you call it.
Same software.
Same software, same.
Yeah, you'll notice.
Any, any issues on your end, Tom, on the billing department, or?
Still, gotta wait.
None known?
Tom, yeah.
Gotta wait on the water to get through to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause otherwise, you gotta be, they gonna get their stuff.
Yeah, I know.
Although, they'll get them then.
Yeah, eventually.
But you'll notice the 3,500, the single phase one's 142, and the other one's 96. It says RD, that's remote disconnect, what that is, so we can get on our keyboard, and we can shut the meter off without manually going.
To the house?
To the house. And then, I was, I don't know, I was still checking into, maybe getting a few of them, like all our rental property, or the ones we usually have.
Problems with?
Yeah, problems with, where, or, we have a problem with, and they got like meters in the back of the house, and they always got dogs out in the yard, and we, usually they're, we'll have to shut them off, or we can put one of these meters in, and we just do it at the off, we can shut it off, then we can load it, when they pay the insufficient funds, we can actually load it, and they can go out there with the TV remote and turn it on, and they only got so much time to do that, so we don't have to physically go there and turn it on in case there's some hostile situation, or dogs in the back, or something.
That's only on these, that's the net meter here?
This is the first from 142, that's where that is.
That's the RD, means remote disconnect?
Remote disconnect, that means, like I say, you can shut it off and turn it off, more or less, with a laptop.
So you, you're gonna buy, most of the ones you're gonna buy are the second line item here, the 96?
Majority will be the 96.
I think that's not a bad use, you know?
I agree.
I don't, I think that's a one-time charge, and everything else that can be done remotely.
Once they get the sample meters in, we get that all lined up, I can come back to the council and say, hey, I'd like to order 500, and you, council can okay that, then, that'd be my suggestion.
So right now, you're just, you're gonna let us know, we're gonna, we're gonna come back another time, as far as before we.
Kinda give you an idea what you're gonna cost.
Okay, so right now, we don't have to make any moves or anything, you know?
And about how many meters it's gonna be?
I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
It'd be like 3,500 meters, and.
That's your entire system here, though.
Yeah.
So you only have, you have about 100, you have around 100 three-phase meters in the, that system? Probably a little less than that, but.
Yeah.
You think you'd need that?
Pretty well take that amount, and that's where they'd be to change the whole system out. Like I say, I'm not gonna order all, I wouldn't request to order all 3,500 at one time, but I hope I go 500 at a time, or, but once they get the samples in.
Let's see how they work first, and then.
See how they work first, and then I'll come back to council, request a certain amount.
Sounds good.
How long will these prices be honored, do you think?
I asked him, and he said they'll honor the price.
Okay.
And maybe a year from now, I may not.
Right, right.
That was my, my question, is there, like everything else, is this gonna double in here?
Cause here a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him, he said yes, and these prices will be good for probably a year. And like I say, I can change with the way things are changing.
Probably gonna be the same as water, John, but we've got to sign a contract, we locked ours in for five years, the same price.
That's what I'm wondering, if you could, when you make your initial, make your initial order, if you could create some document that locks them in for a certain.
Once we get these samples in, he's in accounting, our facility will go over it, and we'll probably sign a contract in, I guess, for the, the way you guys did with water.
Five, 30 a year for that set price on that cross.
That's probably a pretty good move.
Or like I say, it depends, I mean, I can change them all out in two months if I want, Debbie'll hang me by the.
I'm gonna watch.
I'm wondering, do they have, do these have computer chips in them, though?
What's that?
Or do they have computer chips in them?
Almost have to have for the remote.
Remotes, well, yeah, I mean, everything is backordered on that, somebody told me their dog collar's backordered till February.
Really?
Today, and it's got a computer chip in it, so, it's probably a part, a good part of the conversation when you do get it.
They've got a board in them.
A board, computer board.
Yeah, just a board, it's probably the same thing, it's similar read to the, the towers and all the other things.
Yeah.
So we won't need any antennas on the tires, cause I asked him about that, let's see, we go all the way to St. Henry, he said the gas meters and the electric meters are out of the ground, so he said, they picked them up nine miles, but the water meters in a different environment, a greenhouse environment, so it's a lot harder, that's why they have to have antennas, but like I say, our gas and electric, so they've had them, they've had some towns, had meters nine miles away, and it picked it up, so we won't have to mount need, mount antennas here and there.
Right, all right, well, let us know how they work out, and we'll go from there.
Any questions on the electric?
No.
All right, thank you.
Bring her, bring her back when you're ready.
Well, before we give you, Jerry, I just want to introduce, I don't know if you've all know James yet, but James is our safety director, he's here visiting tonight, so that you can introduce yourself to him, and he's gonna stick around, I think, till after the meeting's over, so if you guys have any questions with him, you could certainly talk to him about it, he's probably not gonna answer them for you, but that's okay. All right, thanks, Jerry, all right, Jerry.
Good evening. Start with distribution, we've had 12 new water services installed this month, four of them were in Hunter's Crossing, and six of them in Chestnut Gardens, one on Sunset, Sunset Drive for a new home, and one on Van Buren as well. We had a fire hydrant that they. We had a fire hydrant that the, uh, fire department let us know, they opened it, whenever they closed it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't quit spinning. It was an old, uh, Kennedy fire hydrant, so we dug it out and replaced it with a new Mueller hydrant. We replace, or we repaired our water main break on First Avenue and Van Buren in the intersection. That was just due to the, the cast iron pipes just being brittle, the soil's not being very kind to our cast ironed up to water mains anymore. We had two water main breaks on Second Street, one was on the four hundred east block, and the other was on the five hundred east block. It was a same-day scenario on a Saturday, I believe. And that's, that's kinda same way, that Second Street water mains in pretty bad shape. That'll, that'll be our next on the block to replace.
Isn't that the one, you, you did replace that across two thirty-one?
We did, yeah, whenever we put that in.
So you got a good, you got a good tie on.
Right, yeah, we'll be able to, we've got an inline valve that we can shut off, actually, in both intersections at Main, uh, then one at Jackson and Van Buren, so we'll be able to isolate those, run temporary water main. Uh, we're planning to put it back in the same spot whenever we do it. But yeah, we, we plan to do that, and it's, uh, it's all six and four inch in there, and we'd like to bring that up to an eight inch to help water circulation and bring our fire hydrant setup to ISO specs, get us a little better ISO spec for the year.
Yeah, that's enough. That's probably a good area for improvement, that's pretty old stuff, I think, in that part of town.
Yeah. Yes, it is. We, uh, talking about ISO audits, we finished our fall hydrant flushing. In the fall, we always do our meter reads, our residual and static pressures for ISO, to keep our good standings with our ISO audit for insurance, for the community, not just the city. But, uh, and then the, uh, the crew started servicing and winterizing all of our pumps and tools, um, our trucks, our, our shop and everything like that. I did just get a call this morning, we're gonna have all of our material for Hickory Drive water main replacement on Thursday, so we plan to start that next week, hopefully, everything goes well. So that's, uh, that's all for distribution at this time. If you have any questions? All right, the filter plant, uh, running really smooth, especially since it's cooled off. The lake likes the colder weather, so it's, uh, running pretty flawless, the, the operators, they've been working on winterizing filtration plant as well. Getting some vents shut down and some insulation in those vents to keep the cold air from coming through, and, uh. We've, uh, utilized our sludge, our drying beds for the first time, for our sludge basins that were put in at the plant, so. That was a learning experience, but we got it done, and they're working accordingly, so. And then, the two plant operators, they've just been trying to get some leftover items that wasn't painted, or that's in rough shape since the plant was originally built. Trying to get up to par with the rest of the, the new plant upgrade. Other than that, that's all we have at the filter plant, really. And then our metering system, it's, uh, still pretty standard issued every month, we, uh, we had two stellar reads this month, as of today. And, uh, we've been continuing to hang the door tags for customers to notify them for their leaks. And then, uh, the SRF loan for the meter truck and the, or the service truck and the meters, uh, been working with John Wutzel on that. We have got our transmitter letter and our addendum done, and sent to them, to SRF. SRF sent us back a few items to take care of, one was a sole source letter, uh, our metering system is from Census, so we don't use any other meters but Census. So we're gonna just have a sole source letter to let them know that we will not be getting any other bids on any other brands of meters. So, uh, Steve took care of signing that, and we got that back to him, and we had to, I had on here that we had to have a letter published for two days in the Herald, it's actually only one, I had a misprint there. So, uh, Tom and Amy got that sent to the Herald today, I believe, and.
Should go in tomorrow, I should be in there tomorrow.
Once that goes in tomorrow, we'll get the letters back to certify that was in there, and get that sent off to them, and they said as soon as, as soon as we get that, uh, last item to them, they will approve our funds. So, but everybody in the water department's pretty excited about that. We'd like to, especially the meters, I'd like to get them done before John gets in here. That's for sure. Other than that, that's all I have for the water department. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All right.
No, I appreciate it, thanks, you did a great job, Jerry, thank you. Phil, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Tom, Tom's up next, but, uh, before we get started on that, obviously, last, uh, last meeting, we went through the salary ordinances and things of that kind, and I think we left it with, everything was okay, except we were talking about the police. As far as trying to improve them, as far as percentage-wise a little bit, and see what we could do to make sure we retain, and things of that kind, so. Tom and Gina and I and Chief Parks met yesterday and went over for an hour or two, and tried to come up with some ideas and things, and tried for retention purposes. And I think that if you look on the, uh, salary ordinance, uh, we, we did basically make it a five percent instead of the four percent that we talked about with everybody else, but in addition to that. If you look at it, we looked at the longevity pay, which for, for whatever reason was like two hundred and fifty dollars or something like that. Which means that basically nobody really cares whether they stay or not for two hundred and fifty dollars. So what we tried to do is to try to put a longevity pay in there that would make it really worth their while to stick around for us. And so if you look, basically, what we had put together was, um, after three years, that the longevity pay would be a two thousand dollar increase. After five, ten, fifteen, and twenty, you'll see the increments as they go up from that, with the idea that that would then put them in a, in a price range that actually is, is, is good as, as anybody else in the county, basically, is what it comes down to.
It's, that's probably not an increase, that's a bonus, correct?
It's a bonus, yes.
It's a one, one-time.
One-time bonus.
It's a one-time pay per year, yes.
Right, it's per year.
It's per year, yes.
Annually, right?
Yes, right.
Oh, it's paid on their anniversary, is how we do that.
I read that, but yes.
And Tom can explain to us as far as how it works out into the budget earlier, or I can too, it doesn't really matter, but as, but as it works out, even with that increase, uh, we're still within the budget, we approved as far as the total dollars amount for the budget. As well as, and even with the longevity pay, and putting that into the, I, I guess, to the equation, so to speak. As, as it stands, next year, we're still gonna be under our budget, even after we pay the longevity pay. So it, it's, it works out pretty well for that, and it's, it certainly is an incentive for them to stick around, let's put it that way. So with that in mind, I would certainly answer any questions, or Tom can answer any questions, or Jeff?
The change in longevity would be about a forty thousand dollar.
Yeah, it's like forty-one thousand, I think it comes up to, yes.
Wait, and just a, just aside, and in addition to that, that also goes into the, the police perp costs, and those are also, uh, covered within the budget. Cause that's all based on the first-class control, rather than somebody's actual wages.
So that's, uh, that's our recommendation, but it's up to the council to approve and, and make a motion to approve it, so.
Yeah, and at the last meeting, it was introduced, was two thousand twenty-one thirty-six.
It would require a motion to amend, uh, proposal to two thousand twenty-one thirty-six to incorporate these changes if you so desire. From, if you had to do that first, and then take it through a passage.
Okay. Can you, can you say again what the longevity pay was before?
It was two fifty.
Two, two fifty, and then, and then up two fifty from each, each of those.
So two fifty, five hundred.
When.
Seven fifty, a thousand, right, and it was a.
And then it was twenty-five year, it was up to twenty-five years, and, and that was, uh, fifteen hundred.
Yeah, it started five years instead of three years, yeah.
So we reduced, reduced the amount of time that they had to be here, and shortened the, shortened the time for the, you know, the maximum, too.
Does that pay in one lump sum?
Yes.
It's not like on the annual, monthly, or added to their weekly?
It's just a bonus.
It's, it goes in as a regular, as a longevity pay on their anniversary, whatever pay period is their anniversary is.
Okay, oh, I see that, okay. I think that will go a long way to, um, one, letting our officers know we appreciate their work, um, and we want them to stay. And, um, it'll take away, it should take away that, that reason, that a person would leave.
If, if it's a money reason, it should take away the money reason, if it's something else, then obviously, the money's not gonna be the issue, so.
But it'll tell us what we need to focus on next year, then.
I don't have any objections to it, because I, I think that it's, um, these officers are highly sought by other departments, and the chance of losing, losing them is great. And not even for that, they can go to other. Other career paths, you know, based on, on that, so. Do we need a motion?
We need a motion, yes.
A motion to amend first.
What motion to amend, do you have?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Okay, motion made by Steve to amend, I'll second it. Second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to accept, right?
Motion to adopt, yeah.
To adopt, yeah.
You don't have to suspend the rules, or?
No, you've already introduced last, uh, week, last month, you, last meeting, you introduced.
This is the second reading, right?
It's the second meeting, even though you've amended it.
No motion to adopt.
Motion by Steve to adopt. I'll second that one, too. Second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Duvon?
Aye.
McFerrin?
Aye.
Where? Bounds?
Aye.
Kissler?
Aye.
Four eyes, one absent. Pardon me, other thing, there is just, you, you have sent ten of your financial statements that are on, on the board back to. Free to review.
I really look good on those.
Okay, the next thing is, as we were going through our insurance this year. We basically met with Dunn Insurance, and they were brought, they brought up a situation that probably was changed many times over the last ten or fifteen years, it seems like, on different amendments and things. One of those was having the housing authority director on our insurance, uh, for the city, even though she's not a city employee. They thought that that was not a good thing to do, uh, the fact that the, the liability that we would have long-term, something like that, but since we're self-insured. Would really cost us some money, could cost us quite a bit of money over and above what we probably know for most of our city employees. So what they suggested was doing was actually taking her off, but they actually paid for her to be on our insurance, but instead of that, they suggested her having housing authority pay for their own policy, rather than the city policy to do that. And so that is the recommendation that, as the, I guess you're gonna call it the trustees of the Honeyberg Employment Benefits Plan, which is myself and Tom, and Gina is HR, and, and James, who is the safety director. We all kind of agreed the fact that that's a good thing to look into, to let the housing authority take care of their own, so to speak, and get, take that person off the city plan. And so that's what we're recommending, that the council approved to do that.
The housing authority's already paying.
They're already paying for it.
The self-insured portion to the city, so they just use those same funds to buy a policy for their.
If they can find one, yeah.
Yeah.
They'll need to find a group somehow.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're buying individual policy, I don't think.
To, to the individual, to the person, um, what kind of difference is that gonna make?
To the person, probably just change their coverage by having a gas, because it's gonna be more expensive, be my guess.
Well, I, we talked to, uh, to Scott Blessner about that, and he said that they, they could, they could find something pretty easily to do that. It may change the deductible, or it may change something else, uh, or it may be a little bit more money, or whatever, but he just felt that if, for protection of the city, and for the, for the citizens of the city, obviously, taking a risk for somebody that's actually not a city employee was, was a difficult thing to do, so. So that's why the recommendation was made.
Just, just so I can have it out where I understand it, maybe Phil could, can you explain the housing authority and how, can you explain that to how, how that employee is not an employee of the city, so?
Yeah.
That's out, out on the table here, so we all understand it. I think I get it, but I wanna, I wanna hear it.
Honeyberg Housing Authority is an independent agency, uh, that was originally created by the city of Honeyburg, so units of local government can create housing authorities, the purpose of a housing authority is to promote and develop, uh, and pay for and finance. Clean, affordable, uh, safe housing, uh, but it's not, uh, it's not, uh, a, a direct, uh, commission or agency of the city, it's just an agency that's created, has to be created by a city.
It's not a department.
My, my, yeah, my stat, it's not a department of the city, that's correct. By statute, the, the mayor does appoint the governing body, uh, but those employees are not employees of the city, they are, uh, employees of that separate, independent agency. Even though it's an agency created by the city, it's not, uh, it's not a part of the city, it's not a department of the city.
That's how I understood it, I just wanna make sure of that, because it should be.
They have their own budget?
They're, they're, they're not a department, and it sounds like they are, but.
They have their own budget that you don't approve, you don't.
Right, I know.
I was told otherwise, yeah.
How did, how did that, um, addition to the city plan come about in the first place, was that negotiated?
As I recall, they were, they're having difficulty hiring a replacement executive director when the prior one retired. The prior executive director was covered under her spouse's employer's policy, I, I believe, and they're having a difficult time finding a candidate who, who would accept the job as executive director. Unless they had.
I think there was some money that you used too, about trying to come up with the money at that time, too, to pay for that part of it.
Yeah, I believe, I believe she's, they were added, uh, during Mayor Spinner's, uh, term, cause I was on the board at the time, and difficult for us to find a decent policy for that, for that one person. And if she can find a group policy, I guess that would be fine, but yes, the board does pay for her insurance, her percentage of her insurance.
Right. The housing authority board, yes.
Yes, housing authority board.
And this particular issue was brought to the city's attention by Dunn?
Well, that was one of the reasons we talked to them, about how and why this person fell on her thing, and we had to explain to them, well, because. And then when they were talking about the, the liability that we would encumber if, because we're self-insured, is the fact that on catastrophic illness or something. We've got to explain to the citizens of Honeyburg why we're paying all that out when they're not really a city employee. Uh, so they just decided, what decided they'd let us know the fact that it was probably better to have them on their own personal insurance rather than the city's insurance. And just so you know, too, that it's not gonna change Heidi's position right now, because obviously, as, as my understanding, she was gonna retire anyway at the first of the year. So the new person come in would not necessarily be affected in any way, shape, or form if we do it now. But also, her being on Cobra would still continue on the same policy we've got now, so we, if we don't do that, we could end up having two people on our city plan for a period of time that would, could really cost us some money, to put it that way.
Are they aware of this discussion yet?
Well, nobody's aware of this because this is up to the council to decide whether we want to do that.
Cause my question is, do we have any, any other area that of risk that, you know, firemen, police, council members, board members, anything in the same boat?
No, not from what I gathered.
So, am I considered a city employee?
You're considered, elected officials, elected officials are still part of that, yes.
Okay.
So you're okay, Steve?
Well, I'm, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm just making it, I'm trying to make that clear.
Exactly.
Stay safe, don't, don't go do anything risky. I got you.
No, the only, the only, the only thing, the only person that would affect is that housing authority director, basically, cause it has nothing to do with any family member's eligibility, or anything of that kind.
The reason I'm asking, if, if we, if we engage in this, then does that set some precedent that we, is a, it's a whatever?
No.
Everything else starts hobbling, you know, a domino effect.
No, I don't, I don't think so, cause once again, we're actually, I mean, we're actually employees of the city, we get paid by the city in some way or another.
If that.
She doesn't, so.
Right, it, it, then that's, that's starting to clear it up for me, and, cause I don't wanna set a precedent on, on, on this, and, and then, and then probably a good time here, if we're right at the point of changing, changing. You know, directors or whatever.
Well, that's, and that's one of the reasons that we bring it up today, I mean, to try to get to, because it's like a sixty-day notice we have to give anyway, so that would put us towards the end of the year, which means starting the first of the year would be the, the time to do that, so.
You mentioned Cobra, so it would take effect at the end of this year? But she would still have the ability to stay on the plan if she elects the Cobra option?
Is that correct, Tom? Is that correct, Tom, that's what I?
Yeah, but I would, she, she still has to, would still have to pay the premiums.
Right.
But there's, there's the risk, we'd still have the city?
If she got ill, we'd still?
For the 18 months that she's eligible for Cobra, we would still have that risk back, but the new person, we would not have.
That's a one, that's a one-time 18-month?
Right.
Period, so.
Whereas the mayor point out, you could have two people, you could have the new employee and the former employee, who's elected Cobra, you could have, be at risk of two, two families.
So what other funding does the city provide to them, other than, I know every year that the request to waive the pilot?
Well, they've actually asked this year not to waive it for this coming year, so.
The city doesn't provide anything.
We don't, we don't provide anything, no.
They have their own budget.
They have their own budget?
Yeah, and it's, it should be under their budget that they pay for their own?
And they get, they get funding from the government, cause of subsidization to appoint.
So they have, so they get taxed, they get state funds or something, or federal funds or whatever?
State and federal.
Yeah. So I, I just basically need a motion to either, I guess?
Well, there's no actually an ordinance?
Approve the ordinance, basically with the, I think it's in your board pack as far as?
Yeah, there's an ordinance in here.
The?
Twenty, well, it's, it's an amending ordinance, 2005, that's 30.
Yeah, that position was, was added by ordinance in 2015, so it would take an ordinance to amend?
That's, that's the last amendment that we had was 2015, yes.
Amend our, which has been amended on, in '05 and '13 and '15? I don't know, anybody else have any?
So this has to be done by the next council meeting?
Actually, November, November 1, we have to, we have to give them 60-day notice of the change in the plan.
So if we're gonna do it by January the 1st, we need to do it tonight, basic is what it comes down to.
That would be 2021-37.
Motion, Mr. D?
Introduce, I'm introducing.
I have a second. Seconded by Jose, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now we need a motion to accept, right?
To suspend rules?
To suspend the rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Glenn?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we get to do the, now make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Steve? I have a second? Seconded by Jose, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Dubon?
Aye.
McFerrin?
Aye.
Where? Bounds.
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Four I's, one X.
Does there any other items the council wants to bring forward? Any items from the citizens, wherever the citizens may be out here? If not?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Glenn?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.